I now call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for October 10, 2017. I invite you to rise and recite the pledge of allegiance to the flag, to be led by Neversen Sim Clark, a CCBC student, but more importantly, a former Western Tech student.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. White, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes or additions.
All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
No move.
Second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good, we'll proceed with the agenda as prepared. Sign-up cards were available to the public prior to the meeting for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's meeting. Board practice limits to 10, the number of speakers at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. The completed sign-up cards for this evening have been placed in the box to my right, and the first 10 drawn from the box by Ms. Schaefer will be our speakers for tonight's public comment portion of the meeting. Of course, if fewer than 10 have signed up, all will speak. Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Patrick Roddy. Diana Bergman. Robert Hartlove Jr. Dr. Bosch Farone. Eric Edwards. Sharon Suroff. Mohammed Jamiz. That's it?
Yes.
Very good. As everyone knows, this evening we'll also have comments from those individuals who have signed up to speak about the proposed school calendar for 2018, 2019, and the school climate, school behavior, and discipline. Each speaker has signed up for that, will be heard, and each will be allowed three minutes to address the board. The board's also pleased that elected officials are here this evening, and there are four elected officials who have indicated a desire to speak to the board this evening. I'm going to call them first before we call the advisory and stakeholder groups. So first, and I'll ask all of the elected officials, speakers have three minutes, to the extent that you can hold it below three minutes, that's great as well, we have a busy docket this evening. First, I ask Senator Bobby Zirkin to come forward. Senator, welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, first of all, I apologize about my outfit, I was just with my daughters at school, so I apologize. And thank you for listening to me just for a few minutes, but I would be remiss if I didn't say it's really nice to see Josie Schaefer here. I spent the day at her school today, so it's great to see you in your position. I really just wanted to speak briefly about the proposal related to Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, the two highest holidays of the Jewish faith. You, I'm sure we all, you know, Facebook and social media and emails and so forth, we could cure the criminal justice system and you would get a certain number of emails, but you take away, you make people go to school on the high holidays, I must have gotten a thousand emails on this thing from my constituents, and so I came here both personally and also as a representative of District 11. I mean, scores of individuals, teachers, not just those that are going to school in my district, the kids, the parents, but also teachers, substitute teachers and so forth, that would be affected by this. I don't want to get into the weeds of your school calendar, and I'm loath to come here to speak, but I would be remiss if I didn't say I think this is a very, very bad idea. And I'm a product of Baltimore County Public Schools, we started after Labor Day, we were off on Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, and we made it work, and I know you can make it work as well. I would ask you, I had heard, or at least saw on the news, that a committee had made that recommendation, and I would ask that you very strongly consider not accepting that recommendation and continue with what we've been doing for many years. And that is all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you so much.
Next, I invite Delegate Robin Grammer to come forward.
Thank you, I am a politician, but I think I can keep it below three minutes. I appreciate the opportunity to talk here tonight, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Robin Grammer. I am one of several state delegates that represents southeastern Baltimore County, that's Dundalk Essex Edgemere. I'm here tonight because I'm receiving continuous complaints from parents, students, and other concerned citizens regarding discipline, or the lack of discipline, in Baltimore County Public Schools. This is in terms of both specific cases that are going unresolved over long periods of time, and general climate issues regarding violence, abuse, bullying at our local schools, which are only seeming to get worse. The feeling I'm getting from parents and teachers is that they're completely terrified about talking about these issues for fear of retribution for their job, or retribution for their student. And in response to what are some really radical stories that I'm hearing regarding cases of bullying and disciplinary policies at our local schools, when I talk to someone from Baltimore County, the response, and the feeling that I get, is, well, we don't see any problems, and that everything's working okay. This is a major and massive disconnect between parents and teachers and Baltimore County. And my ultimate hope tonight is that there are a handful of parents who are brave enough tonight to come and tell their stories about their families, their sons and daughters, about how disciplinary policies at Baltimore County Public Schools are impacting the education of their children. And I'll leave it at that, and I appreciate the opportunity for myself and our parents to come and speak tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Delegate. Also here tonight, and I invite to come forward Delegate Bob Long.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity, I'm Delegate Bob Long from the 6th District. We're talking about discipline, it's a big thing that we need to address. One of the things, we go, we look at restorative practices, we need to look into that, also, I heard on TV today that one jurisdiction in New York actually just passed legislation that if you continue bullying, at the last point, that the parents would be fined and/or jailed. I think that we need to look into every avenue that we can, because discipline is a problem in a lot of our schools. I think we have to be decisive, we have to have clear, and, you know, rules, and I think that's one of the problems that we have, that's my personal opinion. But I thought that was amazing that this one school district said, if you're processed, go through the process, if you're convicted, you know, whatever the process is, for bullying, your parents are held accountable. They have to pay a fine, and could possibly go to jail. I know, and we were talking about restorative practices, one of the things I was talking to one gentleman out in the hall, tardiness is a problem. When my kids went to school, if they were tardy, after so many times, they had to go in on Saturdays, and guess what, the parents had to pay for the proctor. I think we need to start looking outside the box, and making sure that we have, you know, have the right discipline and clear, just to make sure that these kids are quite clear. Respect is one of the things that we're lacking in our schools, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate. Last but not least here this evening is Councilman Todd Crandall. Councilman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for recognizing me back in the back there, Ed, I did not sign up to speak, so I do appreciate so. The only thing is when you're-
You don't have to use all three minutes.
When you're unprepared, you tend to go on longer, right? So I'm going to see if I can address that. So I concur with my two delegates, Delegate Long and Delegate Grammer, we have received numerous complaints from parents, and regarding discipline in our schools, all of the issues that both the delegates have already brought up. It is something that we have asked the school board to address. One suggestion that I will bring to the table tonight is, we have, I believe, two parents that want to talk to the board tonight, but there are a lot more parents that I think would like to voice their concerns to the board, or members of the board. I think it's difficult for people in our district to get to Towson at 6:30 on a Tuesday evening, so my request would be that the board consider sending a representative, perhaps the superintendent could send a representative, to talk to some of these parents and hear their stories and their anecdotes, and hopefully that will trigger some of the work that, Verlita, I think that you've already begun. So I think the fact that you are addressing these issues, and I know you're very new, and these things take a little bit of time, but if our communities are more informed as to where we might be headed with this issue, that would serve our constituencies very well. Thank you again for having me and for recognizing me.
Thank you, Councilman. So next on our agenda is public comment, this is one of the opportunities the board provides to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. The members of the board appreciate hearing from interested citizens. While we encourage public input on policy programs and practices within the purview of the board, this is not the proper forum to address specific student or employee matters, or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. I remind everyone that inappropriate personal remarks and other behavior that disrupts or interferes is out of order. I ask you all as well to observe the three-minute clock, which will let you know when your time is up. We'll first have the advisory and stakeholder groups speak, and our first speaker on that list is Tabco's Representative Abby Baiton, Ms. Baiton.
Good evening, Chairman Gillis, Superintendent White, and members of the board. We have several important topics to discuss tonight, and on this time, I'm going to speak at the next two as also, but this time I'm going to focus my remarks on discipline. We continue to work with BCPS officials and are in the process of scheduling meetings to delve even further into discipline issues. We are training faculty councils and administrators specifically on discipline plans. The joint work group with BCPS will be bringing recommendations and suggestions for system-wide changes and supports for discipline work throughout BCPS. The one thing we don't want to have happen is for this board to adopt a prescriptive policy with specifics that are better placed in a behavior handbook. The board policy should be overarching and discuss behavior issues and concerns, but it should not contain specific absolute punishments. We want to see a policy that is both smart and full of empathy. As far as restorative practices go, we are excited about its transformative potential. Tabco educators are advocating to ensure we engage with this new approach effectively, with our eyes open and with enough resources and training to make it work. We don't want educators with insufficient training attempting these subtle approaches to then find them lacking and becoming less willing to try them again in the future. Please continue to work with us to take full advantage of the opportunity that restorative practices presents us as a system. We look forward to further collaboration on the critical issue of discipline, as well as other important topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baiton. Our next speaker from the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee is Megan Stewart-Sickin.
Chairman Gillis, Ms. White, members of the board, good evening to all of you. Over the next several board meetings, members of the CACAC Executive Board will be here to discuss specific items in the next budget for the Office of Special Ed. Tonight, there are several other issues I'd like to discuss. First, October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. As you know, there are special education teachers participating in the Orton-Gillingham Professional Learning Series, and we would like to thank them for their commitment. We understand it requires teachers to be released from their buildings during this very comprehensive series, so we also want to thank the administrators who are supporting their teachers and supporting this instruction in their schools. Next, I want to draw attention to the contract modification on tonight's board agenda for assistive technology software. Kurzweil 3000 is an important tool for teachers in the classroom and for compliance with IEPs. It can also be a game changer for students. It has benefits ranging from allowing text to be read to students, to increasing their ability to answer high-level comprehension questions. Perhaps most importantly to us, in our view, it increases student confidence and creates opportunities for success that help solidify foundations in literacy. We urge the board to modify this contract as requested. And finally, I want to note that our executive board has met in person with Kenny West, Assistant Director of Transportation, and Terrence Powell, who oversees special needs transportation specifically. We were updated on the multi-year strategic plan with the Office of Special Ed and their work on issues such as collaboration, professional development, route analysis, driver recruitment, and retention. We understand that there are still things that need work, and transportation certainly knows this as well. Transportation has had problems, especially with special ed children and parents, in the past. However, the reporting and discussion earlier this year missed the fact that some significant improvements have been made. Our executive board agrees that one area where we have seen great improvement is in responsiveness from the current staff, and I've heard this from some parents as well. Transportation has reached out to CACAC leadership proactively and allowed plenty of time for our questions. We also understand that they are in the process of implementing new software that will track correspondence and responsiveness. We will continue to follow these transportation issues closely throughout the year, but would like to acknowledge that we appreciate transportation's current work with us and with the Office of Special Ed at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker from the PTA Council of Baltimore County is Jane Lee.
Kind of getting used to this. Good evening, Superintendent White, Chairman Gillis, and board members. I usually come and talk about the emails and calls that I've received in the last two weeks. I'm glad to see that I have some parents coming to speak for themselves, but I will go into the issues that you are going to discuss. First, the behavior problems and social climate are always important to us at PTA, from restraints to bullying. We do have concerns that one factor may be that interpersonal relationships suffer because our children are spending so much time on devices and not enough learning social skills that it leads to behavior problems. The fact that we have water problems in schools and heat problems in schools also leads to behavior problems. And then there's the problem with the transportation, which starts off the day poorly and can also lead to the behavior problems, so all the other complaints tie into our behavior problem. As to the calendar, I told you how many emails I was getting, I can't even count them anymore when it came to the calendar, and they were overwhelmingly in support of your Option B, which is closing on the holidays of Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. The reason for that is safety. The fact that, and going conservative, using 10% of teachers being Jewish, not the 15 that I heard last time, you would have 1,500 adults missing from buildings, if you could cover for all of them, and that is doubtful, you will not necessarily have trained professionals in those buildings to watch after the children, and should there be an emergency, we have great concern for their safety. Next, I would ask that the PTA Council have a meeting with the board, just as the advisory councils did tonight, because we are the parent advocacy group of record in the county, and would like to discuss some of these things one-on-one with you and not publicly, because we want to work together. And that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is from the Educational Support Professionals of Baltimore County, that's Lila Marin-Bloom.
Good evening.
Evening.
Superintendent White, Chairman Gillis, and Board of Education. It took a long time for Baltimore County to finally close schools on Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. Baltimore County, just like any other employer and service provider, wants teachers and staff on the job and their students in school. However, there are some days that keeping schools open isn't worth the added expense, since there is no real learning going on due to a predictable higher-than-usual staff and student absenteeism rate. It is estimated that it will cost the system an additional $1 million more in substitute salaries alone to keep schools open just for these two days. Will our students benefit from this expenditure? Will our students begin quality instruction or midday babysitting with the opportunity to be part of an anonymous misbehaving group? There are not enough substitutes during the year to provide knowledgeable, adequate coverage for classrooms and offices when teachers and staff are out due to illness or pressing personal business. What happens when substitutes can't be located to fill in on a regular workday? Risk equality, many schools and offices redistributed workloads among the staffers present. Teachers are routinely asked to fill in for fellow teachers that are not at work. When a teacher with a free period can't be located, then paraeducators become the fallback substitute. Paraeducators are not just asked to cover classes for absent teachers, but other absent paraeducators or absent additional adult assistants, in conjunction with completing their regularly assigned duties. Some of our paraeducators will also be absent on both two days. If enough substitutes cannot be located to fill in for the absent teachers, who will be asked to fill in for absent classroom office and paraeducators? When the only objective is to have an adult to supervise the class, who will there be to help teachers and substitutes deal with less than cooperative students in the classroom? I am here to ask you to continue to keep schools open during Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is from the Citizens Advisory Committee for Gifted and Talented Education, that's Julie Miller-Bretz.
Good evening, Chairman Gillis, board members, Ms. White, and the BCPS community. At the last several Board of Education meetings, I have shared some numbers with you all in order to help illuminate the true need for increased academic office. I have outlined how the advanced academic office staff has been significantly reduced over the last decade, and I have compared BCPS's resources devoted to students receiving advanced academic services to other surrounding school districts, finding that BCPS is rather drastically behind Montgomery and our Undolph Frederick and Howard County in terms of staffing. This week, I would like to focus on staffing levels for several offices within Baltimore County Public Schools that serve special populations of students. The Office of Career and Technology serves 45,739 students and has a staff of 14, for a ratio of 1 staff person to 3,267 students. The Special Education Office serves 13,121 students and has a staff of 66, for a ratio of 1 staff person to 199 children. The Ecel Office serves 5,047 children with a staff of 14, for a ratio of 1 staff person to 306 students. The Advanced Academic Office is more complicated. Because of the fluid and flexible nature of advanced academic programs in elementary school, there is no number of how many children are accessing these services in grades K-5. However, there are 26,972 AA students in grades 6 through 12. If we estimate that there are approximately 13,000 K-5 students, which is likely a low estimate, then the total number of students might be around 40,000, served by a staff of six. This works out to a ratio of 1 staff person to 6,667 children. What BCPS needs is development and implementation of AA programs that emphasize interaction with peers and teachers, which can't happen without more staff. We have heard from many parents who voice very real concerns about the instruction their GT child is receiving. We have heard repeatedly about students in advanced academics who seem to be getting instruction via personalized learning software at a higher degree than others in the class, thereby losing opportunities for face-to-face instruction with a teacher, time for socialization, and time with their peer group. Additionally, if a student is erroneously placed into the wrong level on one of these programs, the teacher is not able to override the software, meaning that the student has to work through levels they have already learned. This algorithmic learning, which can be formulaic and sterilized, strips the teacher of their skills, knowledge, and responsibilities, and there are many teachers who have not received much, if any, formalized training on teaching GT students. We believe that increasing staffing in the AA office would afford many opportunities, including increased opportunities for professional development and training, more capacity for AA staff to write and revise curricula across content areas, as well as help AA staff better work with the advanced academic facilitators that are already in schools. Most of all, though, it would give these students what they need and what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is from ASKME, and that's Michael Fahey.
Good evening, Chairman Gillis, and Superintendent White, and members of the board. I represent over 3,000 employees, more than 1,500 of those are 10-month employees, and half of those are part-time employees. We do not work or get paid on teacher professional development days. We get two inclement weather days, so if there's more than two days that the schools are closed, we don't get paid for those days. And it's for that reason that I support the committee's recommendation of Option A, because those would be two extra days that we wouldn't get paid for, that our checks would be short. As far as the discipline issue, I just go back, we have serious problems with discipline on the school buses, and I just go back to what I asked two weeks ago, that we need an audit of the Transportation Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is time for public comments, speakers, and the first of those is Patrick Roddy. Mr. Roddy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent White, thank you very much for allowing me to speak today on behalf of three of my clients, St. Vincent de Paul, Maryland No Kid Hungry, and Maryland Hunger Solutions. These three organizations are committed to expanding child nutrition opportunities throughout Maryland, and have been particularly focused over the last few months in expanding after-school meals for students in Baltimore County. As board members, you know the numbers, there are 52,000 Baltimore County students who are eligible under the federal guidelines for free and reduced-priced lunches, free and reduced-priced meals. These meals include after-school meals, but unfortunately, Baltimore County lags in this area, and in fact, is one of the lowest, has one of the lowest participation rates for after-school meals of any jurisdiction in Maryland. As you know also, these meals are paid for through federal government funds and are available to a number of sponsoring organizations, including the three organizations that I represent here tonight. Those three organizations are already partnering with the school board to bring the, excuse me, the Baltimore County Public Schools, to bring these kinds of meals to the children who need them the most, because otherwise, it is very possible that children in these kinds of situations may not be able to provide dinner for themselves, or have their parents provide it for them. In order for you to be better educated about the ease of this service and how it works currently, we have sent to each of you an invitation to visit- currently, we have sent to each of you an invitation to visit an onsite feeding site in the next few, in the next few days. We hope you could avail yourself of that. It's going to be a short visit, and we hope that you will see exactly how beneficial and easy the service of these warm after-school meals are in the Police Athletic League centers that we have arranged the tours for. Members of the organizations I represent will be there as hosts, and we'll also be there to introduce you to the Powell Center staff. We do want to congratulate this Board and the school system in their aggressive policies in the area of breakfast and lunch. We think that that is good and should be continued. We do understand also that the school system has recently made after-school meals available to any school that requests it. This is something else also that should be applauded. We are concerned, however, that there is about the level of awareness of that offering, and we would ask the Board to make sure that they have the staff talk to them about the participation in after-school meals, and how many schools have actually asked to have after-school meals provided for their after-school programs in their particular locations.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker is Dayana Bergman.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. I brought water today, that's why I ran out to go get it. So, all these waters represent the 24 schools in BCPS that parents have concern about the quality of water at their sites. Now, some of these parents were going to send me their water samples to my home, and I didn't want that coming to my home. So, I got a little creative, and I said, okay, let me show a visual, show and tell like we did in school. This water is clean and it's fresh, and each one of them has a school on there, like Cogate Elementary, Sandalwood. Well, I got here early to talk to Mr. Kevin Smith and Mr. Dickerson, which was awesome, because they were able to explain to me the process of how our water gets tested in BCPS. Some of the water in our school buildings are coming in through the county water line, and some sites are through the wells. But the color and the quality of water, parents are questioning, they don't know. So, I asked both of them if they could test the 24 sites to reassure these parents the quality of their water. And then they explained to me that we need every single parent that messaged me on social media, reach out to your principals, please. They submit their request per site. If you have a shortage in your water coolers that are available at these sites, they could add water coolers with a reasonable request of why they need it. But it shows something that's very important. Tonight, later on, we'll be talking about discipline. And what our children put into their bodies plays a factor in their behavior and the school climate. Okay? We need to have children that have nutritional meals, not just any snack, but nutritional meals, and safe, quality water for them to drink. So, if you're thirsty throughout the meeting, because I understand it's going to be a long one today, just pick up one of the free waters in our basket. And I've also shared the 24 list of schools with my board member representative, so he knows what they are, and also with Mr. Dickerson. He was very nice, I like talking to him. So, I think it's very important for everybody to communicate with each other. Communication is key for all of us to move forward and not get stuck. So, thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Hartlove Jr.
How are you? Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
My name's Robert Hartlove. I'm an eight-year Marine veteran, so discipline doesn't come far from us. We had some issues at Sparrow Point Middle School last year. We had an issue with a child that was being coddled by a principal. Now, this child has been reported with multiple assault charges within Baltimore County Public School property. This principal decided to put him in a separate room. This child left the room, wandered halls. So, I immediately wrote a social media post about it, and I wasn't getting response back from the principal. After my social media post went to all the local areas, I had over 100 posts and messages back, 12 including Sparrow Point Middle School teachers. These teachers have told me that this child threw soda cans at their head, drawing profanity on desks, there's nothing they can do about it, they're being told. This child from a parent's, the girl was walking to the bathroom, and this child told her he was going to rape her. Two girls from another parent were walking home from school, and this child pulled out a knife and tried to steal stuff out of their bookbag. And this child had multiple SART charges, multiple suspensions, and was still allowed to stay in Baltimore County School. Now, at some point, I understand that you have to try to mold a child and try to help them if they don't have the same upbringing as others. But at some point, too, you have to figure out of how much safety would to the other children are you going to allow that to? This child has left the classroom, this building, and he went into a classroom with kids learning, and this child walked up and started punching a kid. The dad was a Baltimore City cop, and followed charges against him. This is happening in your school system. So, I want you all to ask yourself, if you had a child, son or daughter, do you think that's okay for your daughter to get told she's going to get raped going to the bathroom? Or do you think it's okay for your son to get randomly punched, not doing anything? This stuff is happening in your school system. Do you think it's okay if your, if your family member is a teacher, and they're getting assaulted at school? This is not okay. So, if you think this is okay, and this is happening in your school system, there is a disconnect, as Mr. Grammer said. So, appreciate your time, and I hope this gets solved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Bosch Farone.
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
Senator Zirkin mentioned 1,000 emails. Last year, we brought you 800 to 900 petition of Muslim Americans residing in the county, and we gave it to you. All right? That was not really taken in consideration. When Ms. Romaine Williams asked for the input of the public, of the calendar and the holidays, especially non-comer holidays, this room was filled with Muslim Americans residing in this county and the holidays. That was not taken into consideration. If it is numbers game, 1,000 Jewish emails should be equal to 1,000 Muslims who came here, and actually, more than 1,000. Our assertion is that it's unsafe to open on the Jewish holidays. There is really no proof of that. In the last calendar committee, all members, including Ms. Serduke and Mr. Burke behind me, agreed that there are no data that have been used credibly to close on the Jewish holiday. It basically started with Dr. Berger. He closed on his own holiday, and everybody after that really followed through. High cost of substitutes. It's about equality. If the school system has to get substituted for any reason, it's about equality. Jews paying taxes equal Muslims paying taxes, Hindus paying taxes, Sikhs paying taxes. It's about equality. Absenteeism. It's a fake sham statistic. You can't use absenteeism, as Mr. Olferder has proposed that a couple of years ago. It means the person wants to take off. It doesn't mean the person is really Jewish. Could be a friend of a Jewish person, could be somebody who's not really even has a faith, he just really wants to take the school system and have another day or two as school closing days. Discipline. You heard that today a whole lot. How about discipline of the Board of Education in granting non-comer religious holiday closure based on secular, objective, verifiable reason, and not really a political reason? Watch all the Muslim Americans who came since 2004. Actually, I have been here since 1997 or so. All of them are ordinary citizens. What does the lobby brings in? They bring Senator Zirkin and the BJC Director, which is a political organization.
Thank you, Dr. Farone. Our next speaker is Eric Edwards.
Superintendent White, Board members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. And the Marine, I believe it was Mr. Hartlove, had made mention about the discipline and our children. And I, I second the aspect of, of us looking at it as our children, and not just looking at it as an issue. Several of our delegates and parents have really discussed items regarding various proposals of what to do and how to really address these disciplinary issues. However, the challenge is, you know, may not be just that. The focus should also be, and really even more so, focusing on the cause of this, as far as why. The state and the county has guidelines where there's mental, where there's actually vision and hearing screening that's mandated, but mental health screening is not something that's listed as part of that mandate. And that's something that we should really be addressing. That was the young lady said earlier with regard to more. She touched on the why as far as situations regarding the busing, as far as heat and air conditioning. I've been to several meetings where there have been, you know, we still have schools that don't have adequate air conditioning. We have a school that I represent, Western Tech, which Go War Marines, as awesome as that school is, and as many schools are in Baltimore County Public Schools, has been around for 20-something years and has not had a renovation. Now, that's not to say that there haven't been air conditioning put in. Some pieces, there are window units in several schools, as opposed to having adequate air conditioning for the entire community, which many of those things could affect. But I think really, coming back to my initial point regarding the mental, you know, mental health screenings, with the exposure to so many forms of media, whether it be video games, movies, and, you know, the social media as far as the internet, the information age has brought so much more into lives. Families have become more busy with regard to the workload, the student workload for when you and I were in school is three times as greater than, you know, for our children. And when I say "our children," I mean our children in BCPS. And I don't know if any of your children are in Baltimore City, you know, Baltimore County Public Schools. I'm representing, you know, I actually grew up in Baltimore City, so I'm a product of Baltimore City Public Schools. And, you know, my mom and dad did the best they could, but I was a latchkey kid. I would venture to say that there still are latchkey kids that are out there, and they may be dealing with a lot more issues than what we've ever even addressed. So, just, you know, looking at laws and regulations, that's one aspect, but we need to really step back and maybe talk to the kids, and really find out what's going on in their heads, and really see if we can get to that cause, and maybe...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Saroff.
Good evening. I hope you're not getting sick of me yet.
Good evening.
Maybe if we start doing our jobs, I won't be here. I'm going to talk again about communication, and this time concerning the communication that is delivered by school administrators to parents and their representatives. I have had so many complaints from parents this school year that I haven't had even time to rest on my Jewish holidays, because I'm getting inundated with phone calls. Parents who are telling me that their teachers are not implementing IEPs, and principals who are telling me about nonexistent documents that they don't even know what it is. I have one principal telling me, oh, there's an RTI document. How many of you on the Board know what an RTI document is? RTI stands for Response to Intervention. When I went to a special ed meeting for that particular student, the IEP chair and the case manager didn't even know that the RTI document existed, because there isn't an RTI document for that student. This is the kind of lack of communication or poor communication that goes on between administrators and parents, because of the administrators not understanding the law and not willing to address parent needs and student needs. And if you're not addressing student needs in special ed, you have discipline problems. And I'm going to talk about that later on public comment for that particular issue. But I have students whose parents are very concerned that IEPs aren't being implemented the way they should be, because "I" equals individual, not one size fits all. We can't continue to dump kids in general education and not address their needs and not allow parents to be involved. We can't continue to intimidate them or their representatives or retaliate against them. And when I speak of retaliation, I personally have felt that because of my own children in the...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mohammed Jamil.
Peace and good evening, Chair, Mr. Gillis, and Ms. White, and the esteemed members of the Board. I am Mohammed Jamil, as an ex-navel officer, an educator, past PTA president, businessman, member of the FBI Citizen Academy, one of the commissioners in one of the commissions, and represented nearly 30,000 Muslims of the Greater Baltimore as President of the Islamic Society of Baltimore. Today, I sit here before you for the 78th time as an ordinary citizen. In other words, I didn't get off the boat yesterday. I am well aware of the politics and the challenges that are entrenched in our system. As a PTA president during Dr. Dubel's time, that goes to tell you what old I am, I observed firsthand the discriminatory policies and unequal distribution of resources across the schools. Later, we also discovered the Islamophobic curriculum full of misinformation or disinformation in use since decades in the BCPS for the 7th and 10th grades. We were consistently reminded that this was a scholarly-written curriculum, until the curriculum audit in 2008 rectified the erroneous information. We couldn't get our arms around such phenomena and the institutionalization of Islamophobia until, this is what I discovered. This is George Curzon, the British Secretary of State for Foreign Affairs from 1911 to 1921. He sent this advisory to President Woodrow Wilson, and here it is. "We must put an end to anything which brings about any Islamic unity between the sons of the Muslims, as we have already succeeded in finishing off them. So, we must ensure that there will never, ever arise again unity for the Muslims, whether it be intellectual or cultural unity." Well, knowing that this is the root cause, we have been investigating and been on the mission to educate. It's your job in the Board to educate the citizenry so that they are enlightened, so that they understand what is the true fact. We have right now 917 hate groups... We have right now 917 hate groups in addition to the crime syndicates in our country, and every year the numbers is increasing. They comprise of religious as well as different ethnic groups. It should alarm us if we are truly patriotic and love our country. Not a single one of these is of Islamic background. We have rebutted every one of your alternative facts to just...
...and denial of equal treatment to Muslim students. We are only for equality, justice, equal treatment, no isolation, inclusion. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamil. Next on our agenda is public comment on proposed school 2018-2019 calendar. And the first person who has signed up to speak is Howard Libbitt.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Howard Libbitt. I'm the executive director of the Baltimore Jewish Council and also the proud parent of two children here in the Baltimore County Schools. You've heard me speak before on this issue, so I'll try and keep it short. I want to thank Senator Zirkin, thank the PTA Council, and thank the educators of Baltimore County who agree that the best calendar choice for next year would be the one that keeps the county schools closed for the two Jewish holidays. I know this isn't about respecting a particular religion. The children and the teachers and the principals and the staff who are Jewish will observe the Jewish holidays next year regardless of whether the schools are closed. The question is the impact of what happens to the schools if they're kept open next year. The number of subs that would be needed for the large number of Jewish teachers and other staff, whether you could find those subs, and if you can, what the cost would be and what the learning is. We've heard the stories of, from teachers and others who were in the schools back before the mid-1990s when the schools were open on the Jewish holidays, there wasn't enough staffing, it was a struggle to find subs, you had many classrooms without enough supervision. So kids were put in auditoriums so that there'd be enough staff to watch them. That's not learning, there's a cost to that as well. Again, I know you can't make a decision based on religion. This is based solely on operational and fiscal needs. I've shared with a number of you the best data we have. It's not precise. There's no form, there's no box on the form to apply to be a teacher that says, "I'm Jewish," nor is there a box on the form when you enroll your children in the public schools to list what religion you are. So the data's not perfect, but the best data we have available suggests there are significant numbers of Jewish students, teachers, principals, and staff who would be taking the holidays off and would have a substantial impact on the operation of the county schools. Either way, we don't have spring break back. It's still a short weekend regardless of whether, or, excuse me, a long weekend regardless of which calendar option you pick. Both calendar options have five inclement weather days. There's protection in there for weather. We're still stuck with either a four or five-day weekend. I urge you to make the best operational decision for the county schools and keep them closed on the Jewish holidays next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deanna Bergman. 2018-2019 calendar.
Okay, this is the calendar. Okay, perfect. Hi, everybody. So, as you know, my husband's active-duty military, and we've had the opportunity to see how each school district in different states do their calendar. One thing I noticed last year with the change of starting school after Labor Day and ending school on June 15 was that last year the calendar committee had three options to choose from. This year, I'm kind of curious that there's only two. And there's one piece that really bothers me, I take very personal, and I know it's more of a state issue, but Veterans Day here in the state of Maryland is not off in public school. And that really bothers me because my husband received and was named after a veteran. I have two very close friends of mine that paid the ultimate price that were veterans. So on Veterans Day for my military family, we would like to take the opportunity of visiting all the wonderful memorials for our veterans here and share their history of how my husband was named and how two very close friends of mine I lost paying the patriotic freedoms that we take for granted, like freedom of speech, freedom to practice religion. So as I look at the dramatic change that's being discussed with the different religions, I try to think about the safety portion of it. We have certain schools throughout BCPS that on a routine basis, we have a shortage of substitute teachers, a shortage of substitute teachers to just function on the regular day. So for some of these schools that are going to be impacting with teachers taking off to practice their religion because they have every right to do in this country, we have some safety concerns. And everybody keeps talking about discipline also being a major concern. The kids cannot outnumber the teachers and the educators. So I asked the new calendar committee to probably consider a third option. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mohammed Jamil.
Thank you once again for giving this opportunity. And as I was mentioning how important the education is, many of our children have come before this board, and they have pleaded with you at numerous times. They have enumerated the hardships that they face by taking off on their highest holidays. They are stressed out. It is exacerbated by their knowledge that they are the ones being singled out, alienated, and marginalized. It is not a numbers game. It is injustice against one child is injustice against all. This breeds contempt and hatred. You are the leaders. It is your duty to find the solution. It is not up to us to give you that solution, even though we did provide to the board about 10 years ago, a fair solution for all minorities. Muslims are not against anyone's religion. Please help in stopping the rumors and the propaganda and the politics behind it. I have received many complaints that Muslims are trying to stop the Jewish holidays. Only education, as I was saying before, can enlighten us and everyone else. We only want inclusion and justice. I respect Senator Zirkin. He said, "Go back to what has been since 1998." What about going back to what existed for decades and decades prior to 1998? That's not the solution. No employer can discriminate against its employees. It begs the question, can you discriminate against your customers? Students are your customers. Are you going to discriminate against them? This is not a simple question. It is a question that requires thought, it requires collaboration, and cannot be decided for one side or the other. It must be decided based on equality, inclusion, and justice. Once the justice is not perceived by the children, my youngest is 40 years old now, and he put through and lived through this perception that he is going to be discriminated. It is you who's teaching that. It's your policies that are enforcing that. These are not good times in our nation. We must eliminate this division, this separation. If we really want to unite, you must do justice. It must be for all. There is a third option. Why don't we have holidays for both? Why only one? Why not? Is that another solution?
You had the petition from more than 800 who were only from the Southern District. There would be many more if they were to be here and present a petition from the Western, Northern, Northeastern Districts. So please do the justice.
Thank you, Mr. Jamil.
Thank you, and God bless you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Bosch Faroon.
The calendar committee met in April and in May of this year and voted unanimously to keep the schools open on both Jewish holidays. Members realized that they could not propose closing on the Muslim holidays and Jewish My colleague in the back, Ms. Lee, said 10% of teachers are Jewish. Where the numbers came from? There is no objective, verifiable support for any number like that. And even if it is true, why the school system has so much Jewish teachers and not Hindus, Sikhs, Muslims, unbelievers, you name it, whichever, you know, category it is? Not enough substitutes. The only way really the school system would not have enough substitutes if they open on the Jewish holidays is because the school system administration didn't plan for it. You have plenty of time. There's plenty of unemployment in the school system, in the county. And to that, I ask you, all the hospitals I work at have large number of Jewish employees, internists, surgeons, administrators, chiefs of departments. The hospital doesn't get paralyzed on the Jewish holidays. Police Department in Baltimore County, Baltimore City, does not get paralyzed on the Jewish holidays. Amazon, if it came here, it would not be paralyzed on the Jewish holidays. IBM or whichever Tiro price that we have in the county would not be paralyzed on the Jewish holidays. Baltimore County Government is open on the Jewish holidays. They don't get paralyzed. None of the organizations around us, business or government, behaves like the school system. Why? Imagine the impression about the water. Jewish employees get good water and Muslim employees get less good water. Good meals for Jewish teachers and students and bad meals for Muslim students. It is discriminatory for you as Board of Education to close on the Jewish holidays and not to offer equal treatment for the Muslim community. We are asking for inclusion. We want our children to grow up American citizens loving this country and not really feeling marginalized, not feeling left behind. We want you to implement what you talk about when you talk about diversity and inclusion and engagement. We want you to mean it when you say liberty and justice for all. Otherwise, the word "all" means nothing. It's not really about all. It's a school system that is controlled by one section that has no rationale except bringing Senator Zirkin and the BJC director to support their cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frun. Our next speaker is Abby Baton.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I would like to address the calendar issues that are facing us with the new edict from the governor. This year, we will experience the first of the unintended consequences by having a much shorter spring break. Students and staff need spring break for recharging and reinvigorating after the long stretch from January to March. We will see fatigue set in for both adults and children in the system, and frankly, I'm concerned about what the spring will be like in BCPS, especially if we have a bad winter. We, as a system, are forced by the governor to conform to a one-size-fits-all schedule. That decision is currently out of our hands. However, the Jewish holiday closing dates are not. This is not a decision because it is a Jewish holiday or any other person's holiday, but because of the safety for the schools. I have been around longer than almost all of our current school board members, and I remember when our Jewish teachers had to find substitutes for their classes during the spring of the previous school year because there weren't enough substitutes to go around. Teachers and students are going to take this time regardless. Many schools will struggle to actually educate when that happens, and this is not the way it should be. Hurting our children into the cafeteria to watch a movie because there aren't enough bodies in the school to be there for them is not what we should be doing. Our concern is not only for the safety of our students, but for the missed learning opportunities for all. Without enough teachers to go around, schools end up watching children instead of educating them. Those two days become missed days for their curriculum to move forward. The unintended consequences for this change could be felt by all students in the system. It is not in the best interest of our students, staff, and the system to remain open for those holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Saroff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am not from Baltimore County. I am from New York. I'm from a part of New York that was predominantly Jewish, so I was afforded the opportunity of having my holidays off no matter what. I worked, when I came to Baltimore, I worked for the city for a year. I worked for the county for a year. The city does not give the Jewish holidays off. And I can tell you that I felt the sting of antisemitism when I took my holidays off. And that's not the first time I felt antisemitism, but I took my holidays off anyway. And if I worked in this system, I would continue. And I can tell you that the importance of that holiday requires that we take it off. This is not about equality of different religions. I'm a big advocate of the Muslims getting their holidays off too because I think that's fair and equal. But what I am concerned about also is how we are working the calendar. We started after Labor Day in New York, and we finished around the 15th of June. We had Jewish holidays off. We had three days for Jewish holidays off, not two. We had Columbus Day, we had Veterans Day off, and we had a week in December, a week in February, and a week in the spring around Easter. We didn't have inclement weather days, and we certainly have a lot more up there than you guys do down here. That's why we had a February break. There is a third option. We ought to consider it, but we also ought to keep the Jewish holidays in that calendar. I think we ought to take a look at, before we make a decision of any kind, do it an educated decision. Look and see how many of those teachers are indeed Jewish, how many students are indeed Jewish, and do the same for the Muslims. That's how we get equality in the school system.
Next on our agenda this evening is public comment on school climate behavior and discipline. And as an introduction to that topic, I ask our Chair of our PRC Policy Review Committee, Mr. Verge, to speak.
Very briefly, tonight's public hearing is really not an original idea of the Policy Review Committee. It was actually an idea of a BCPS parent who had contacted me about meeting. And over coffee at a Dunkin' Donuts on Taylor Avenue in Parkville, she shared with me her story and the story of her student, her child at a middle school. And she said, "You know, it's good that I'm able to sit and talk with you about this, but I believe there are other parents just like me." And their families have their own stories about their students that attend BCPS schools. And these stories are also about the topics of behavior and climate... And these stories are also about the topics of behavior and climate and discipline. And she said there ought to be a day when they can come and address the board in a public hearing. And listening to what she had to say, I said, well, I'll talk to some of our board members. It found its way onto a retreat agenda for the board. And when policies related to discipline and behavior came before the Policy Review Committee, I shared with the chair, Romaine Williams, Angie Thumann's idea, which was that there would be a public hearing where parents could come and other folks could come. Because our BCPS families aren't just families that have students in our schools, although there's lots of them, but also our BCS families include our staff. And some of our board members might remember when some of our staff came and brought signs with them to highlight the importance of this particular topic. And then, of course, there are the parents, there are the families that are in both groups. There are both staff members, and they also have kids. So I was able to talk to Romaine, and the board members on the committee of the PRC said that as a, as part of the advisory recommendation to the board regarding these policies, that a public hearing be held. So here we are tonight. I know that I'm eager to hear what our BCPS families, our stakeholders have to say. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that introduction. And I thank Angie Thumann for her idea. People on this board do listen to what parents have to say. Thanks.
Very good. Our first speaker on school climate, behavior, and discipline is Deanna Bergman.
Hi again. And I want to say a special thank you to Angie. She's a friend of mine on social media, and I am so excited that this day has come. Yay, Angie! Okay, so, discipline is a very tricky topic to discuss because it's complicated. Reason why discipline is complicated, because there's different areas that you would address differently. Discipline is not a cookie cutter, one-size-fits-all. You could have, for example, a student with a language barrier because of the lack of being able to communicate in their native language, have kind of like a scared reaction and go into a defense mode. I've seen a child as young as kindergarten once freak out at one of our teachers because of that language barrier. And I was able to come into the situation. I was a BCPS interpreter, and the minute I walked into the room and the child understood I could speak the native language, that child was relieved. It was no longer a child that was scared, aggressive. I have a child that used to be a nonverbal child. He expressed himself very different. The supports that we provided for my son, that's now 50% intelligible, to be able to communicate his wants and needs, are very different from a child, for example, that might need a disciplined behavior support because there is no parent at home, there is no anchor at home. I talked earlier, the importance of that nutritional value going into the body of a child that will impact their behavior. Same thing when this child at home doesn't have that anchor. And if our schools that have a lot of children and a great deal of population doesn't have that anchor at home, and there's no anchor at home and no anchor at the school itself because they don't have enough supports, you have chaos. And what's interesting about chaos is when you have chaos, guess what? A teacher cannot teach in chaos. When you have chaos, a student cannot learn in chaos, and nobody moves forward. So as you're looking at these different disciplinary actions, please consider, I keep hearing equity, I believe there's an equity department. I don't see that department communicating with our board-certified behavior analysts or the experts in analyzing behaviors, reducing behaviors. They hold the secret key to the discipline matter. Let's get some of our skills specialist people communicating with each other, working together with their strong strengths to come up with the supports and services our children need to learn and our teachers need to teach.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve McIntyre.
Thank you very much for hosting this forum. I wanted to comment about a buzzword that has been infusing discussions of disciplinary policies, and that is racial equity. It's a completely agreeable sounding concept, but I think it masks some deeply harmful ideas. I've attached a case study that hopefully was distributed from the Manhattan Institute about the experience of St. Paul, Minnesota, in fully implementing this program. In four years, they created an environment of anarchy. Teachers were beaten, sent to the hospital, test scores declined precipitously. The school board, which was elected, was fired, and then the superintendent after four years. But by that point, undoubtedly, many kids' futures were ruined, and thousands of parents fled the school system, which exacerbated the problems of concentrated poverty and segregation that we're all trying to solve. So I have a few requests for the board, which is, first, do not create bureaucratic obstacles to maintaining order in the classroom. Yeah, I echo Tabco's suggestion that the guidebook not be overly prescriptive. We have to have confidence in our school-based personnel, you know, who are closest to the issues at hand. Don't create obstacles to disciplining chronically disruptive or violent kids. It doesn't help them. They need the message that when they harm their classmates, there are consequences. And it certainly doesn't help, you know, the kids who are being victimized by these behaviors. Secondly, I'd say to the extent that the county has implemented policies based on the Obama administration's 2014 Dear Colleague letter, that you reconsider them and do so with a skeptical eye. That guidance has no legal authority. It's not based on science or reason, but a dishonest, toxic ideology. And to the extent anyone in the Department of Education objects to Baltimore County's policies, you should fight them and do so in the most public way possible. Parents, teachers, and the public will support your reasonable policies. Truth and justice is on your side. I say racial equity is a dishonest, toxic ideology because it takes a fact, disparate rate of school discipline, and then deliberately denies obvious explanations such as family structure, socioeconomic conditions, in favor of predetermined conclusion of discrimination. It does not seek equal treatment for all students. It seeks equal outcomes. And the only way this can be achieved is by reducing discipline or creating different disciplinary standards based on race, a truly noxious and unjust concept.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to talk about the disciplinary. From my standpoint, I have my son, who has had some experiences in middle school and elementary school. The problem that I've experienced was when the child he has had issues with, the school will handle it, but then it stems back to the parents. So I feel like a lot of times, not necessarily the school, but like a lot of people have been touching on, sorry, I'm really nervous. A lot of people have been touching on that it's not just the school, but the school, I feel like Baltimore County Public Schools need to also get the parents more involved. Hold them more accountable as well. That the children, they do need to know right from wrong. They do know right from wrong, obviously. And just be taught that better. The bus situations, they are a little out of control. There is no discipline on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Hartlove. He may have left. Mr. Hartlove?
He may have left.
I'm gonna wait and see. We'll go to the next one if Mr. Hartlove is in the other room, and we'll just put him in another slot here. Thank you.
Good evening. As a school librarian, Tabco board member, and mom of two BCPS graduates, I interact with teachers, paraeducators, additional adult support, staff, parents, community members, and administrators. And I hear time and time again about the issues and problems of discipline in our school. Everyone has a story to tell, a problem, or more accurately, multiple problems they have faced, and a bemoaning of the lack of appropriate consequences and follow-through. The tales that are shared with me transcend grade level, race, socioeconomic factors, school location, and every other factor that often affects education. Our school system employees and our parents and communities are frustrated. We frequently hear that while there are discipline plans in place and a BCPS Student Behavior Handbook with consequences, there's a lack of following the parameters, a lack of follow-through by administrators and/or teachers, and a general lack of consequences for students. I am one of the co-chairs of the Tabco Discipline Action Working Group, affectionately called DOG, working to address some of these issues. We have met with BCPS officials so that we can collaborate and find viable solutions that meet the needs of as many of our population as possible. To that end, the solution needs to be a broad and overarching policy. It must be well thought out, collaboratively developed, and work to teach our students the how and why about behavior expectations and not just give a reward or a punishment. We cannot have a prescriptive policy dealt by this board. It simply does not serve the needs of our students or our teachers and staff. I'm respectfully asking this board to continue to allow Tabco and DOG to work with BCPS to create this policy. We all want what is best for students. Please give us the time so that we can get this policy done right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abby Baton.
And good evening once again.
Good evening.
So school climate has been an issue for as long as I can remember, and I'm not going to just address this as a discipline issue. The workload for our teachers, which has increased steadily over the years, is problematic. Much of the increase, which has come down on our staff, is directly traceable to edicts from the state and federal governments. These generally require hard-working educators to prove that we are indeed teaching our students. Therein lies the difficulty. Teachers feel they are not trusted to do what is right without draconian measurement systems put in place. Teachers, the real education experts, always willing to learn from others, always working tirelessly to improve their craft, are the last to be consulted on these new and often pedagogically inappropriate drains on our valuable time and energy. As an early childhood educator, we are not able to spend the time and teach our youngest students how to get along, which in turn adds to the discipline issues we are now facing. The best remedy is for our teachers to have help by the way of extra hands. Ours is one of the few professions who don't have consistent assistance with the work. Our expertise should be spent planning lessons, collaborating with other teachers, conferring with parents and other experts to move our work forward. We need more paraeducators and more well-trained, properly-paid additional adult assistants in our system. You can't keep just loading up our plates without giving educators enough help or taking something off our packed schedules. Let's work together to get the resources we need to properly staff our schools so our students can get the attention they need to learn and also to learn how to get along with one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Saroff.
I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent of a child who used to be a behavior problem and as an advocate who gets inundated by her clients concerning the lack of appropriate response by administrators concerning discipline problems. Just today, I received a phone call from a client telling me that her son had ripped up a classroom, kicked the teacher. He was not sent to the focus room. He was not given a suspension. He was allowed to come back to school today. The very next day. What does that tell him? The school is afraid to admit that they don't have the supports to address this child's needs. So they're simply not doing anything about it. And this is not one school. This is many schools, because I'm getting this from many parents. Also, when an incident occurs, you are required by law to document that incident, especially if you contact a parent and say to the parent, please come get your child before the end of the day. That's called a suspension. Whether you like it or not, it's a suspension because that child is asked to leave the building. You better document that, and you better address it. And there is a lack of documentation of these incidents to the point where a court order can't even get them because they don't exist. The way you address discipline is consistency, communication, support for your teachers, enough assistance in the classroom. I'm sorry, I can't teach in a classroom of 35, 40 kids. But that's what a lot of teachers are expected to do nowadays. You lower the ratio of student to teacher. You put enough supports in those classrooms. You follow those IEPs with fidelity. And you document things, and that discipline's gonna go down. You have to address it appropriately.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Edwards.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity again. We've already spoken, it sounds like, you know, a lot of folks have echoed the notion that resources, an increase in resources is definitely needed. And previously, I may mention about, with regard to behavior, you know, we're looking at a lot of the consequences versus looking at kind of the causes, some of the issues that may be underlying, that may not be as easily seen as something happens, then you take action. So, I mean, you know, with looking at those resources and increasing the opportunities for, well, as far as with, because I had a story as well with regard to my daughter, I'll just say this, situation where my daughter had witnessed a child being bullied in the lunchroom and had seen it happen. The kid, the young man, didn't say anything, you know, out of embarrassment, my daughter assumed. So she stood up for him on his behalf, went to tell the teacher, told that teacher, and what happened? Nothing. The teacher said nothing, documented nothing. Instead, my daughter was frustrated, came home, talked to me. I said, we need to talk to somebody else. I need you to go and speak to other vice principal or your counselor and maybe get some guidance, you know, let them know what's going on. So in the course of her sharing that information, she shared it, the educator said, well, you know, it could be, you know, I see your point, and I see what the teacher might have thought. She probably thought blah, 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 blah. Neither was a student. Needless to say, what ended up happening as a result, my daughter was just placed on an anti-bullying conference. She was, you know, actually invited to go to speak on this, which is one thing, but then what about the kid that was bullied? What about the child that did the bullying? What happens? So what I'm, you know, what I'm really proposing with the resources that we're talking about increasing, if anything, we're looking at perhaps maybe just developing an interprofessional team that would consist not only of the teachers, paraeducators, administrators within the school, but I'm really curious to know what the student, you know, what the school nurses are doing as far as maybe, and counselors. What type of education are they receiving about maybe how kids are responding in this information age? How they're responding with a stress level that is way more than you and I had even experienced? I mean, all of us have experienced stress. Many of us have had kids, so we see the stress that they're dealing with way different than what we had dealt with. The pressures of excelling and trying to do better, you know, academically and in other aspects, and doing so many other extracurricular activities. There's so much going on, but the focus is still perhaps being lost on what's going on in these kids' minds. What's going on in our children's minds? And really, when I'm going back to those, you know, the nurses and counselors, as we look to increase the resources, maybe let's focus on educating our administrators and the teachers on identifying exactly what these really situations are and how to address them properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, you are the last of the speakers on the school climate behavior and discipline matter. The board thanks all of you for participating in both the calendar public hearing and the school climate behavior and discipline public hearing. Next on our agenda is Item F, New Business Personnel Matters, and for that, we invite Dr. Mayo to come forward.
Good evening, Chairman Gillis, Superintendent White, members of the board. I'd like board consent for the following personnel matters: retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, and certificated appointments.
I have a motion to approve personnel matters as presented in Exhibits F-1 through F-4.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayo. Next on our agenda, Item G, is action taken in closed session, and I invite Mr. Nosbaum to come forward.
Thank you. Good evening. Earlier this evening, the board considered an appeal regarding a confidential student matter in your quasi-judicial capacity. This matter was considered on the record as there was no request made for oral argument. At this time, it would be appropriate to confirm the action that was taken in that case in closed session in that matter, which was hearing examiner number 18-11.
Do I have a motion to approve the action taken in closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in fever, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, and the order's on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Nosbaum. Next on our agenda, I think we're gonna contract, but Mr. Stewart just stepped out, so.
I could present the contract.
Very good.
We met earlier this evening and reviewed as a committee Items H-1 through H-10, and are forwarding all items to the full board for approval.
Mr. Stewart, he stole your thunder. Mr. McDaniel's motion doesn't need a second. Any discussion on contract items H-1 through H-10? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Let's see. The next item on our agenda is Item I, an information item only, and that is that the 2017 pupil yield study is in your materials for your review. I don't think we have any presentation on there, right? Okay. And that brings us to announcements. School is closed for students on Friday, October 20th, for a statewide professional development day. And our next board meeting is Tuesday, October 24 at 6:30 p.m. Is there anything for the good of the order before we adjourn?
Policy committee on Monday night.
Policy committee on Monday night.
Monday afternoon.
Monday afternoon.
When's that sun going down?
Four o'clock is not my time.
Any other matters?
4:30.
We're adjourned.